I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Bergman?
Present.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Here.
Chair Silberman?
Here. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This public comment period is limited to items that are not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone who is here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item is approval of the minutes from the October 16 meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
I didn't have any.
I didn't have any changes.
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in -- can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silberman?
Yes. The next item is a public hearing. For those here in attendance, I'll briefly describe the process for a public hearing. Generally, staff presents a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with staff's recommendation. The applicant then has the opportunity to make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on their proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. Be aware that if you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. We ask that speakers fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary before addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded, and that allows the microphone to pick it up. This will assist the staff in preparing the minutes. So the first item we have is for design review for a signed permit and mitigated negative declaration to allow a billboard on city leased property at 815 American Street. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, good evening. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. As indicated, the item before you is design review for a signed permit and mitigated negative declaration for a new billboard on city leased property at 815 American Street. This is really touchy, isn't it? Can you get me back to the beginning? I'm sorry. I'll use this one instead. Yeah. Okay. Quickly for background, San Carlos Municipal Code was updated in 2013 to permit billboards on city property with design review and a lease agreement. The proposed project includes the city leasing a portion of 815 American Street from the property owner, construction of a new LED billboard, and removal of an existing billboard. The proposed billboard is located at the end of American -- ah, wrong way. Sorry. There we go. The proposed billboard is located at the end of American Street adjacent to Highway 101. The site is owned's general commercial industrial, and the site is surrounded by commercial and industrial buildings. The billboard is proposed at a height of 55 feet with the display area 48 feet by 14 feet, and that's located about 41 feet above grade. The display panels are supported on a brushed aluminum pole cover with the city logo displayed. The proposed billboard is consistent with the regulations contained in San Carlos Municipal Code Section 18.22. And the new billboard is designed to match the existing billboard located at the end of Branston Road at Highway 101. An initial study mitigated negative declaration were prepared for the project. The study did not find any significant environmental impacts. Mitigation measures include air quality and hazardous materials during demolition and construction, cultural resources measures if unknown archaeological resources are found, and hazard and hazardous materials mitigation measures during demolition and construction. We do have the SEQA consultant here this evening if you have any questions relating to that document. And then the visual simulation. This is the existing view as seen on southbound US Highway 101. And then this is with the proposed billboard. You see it located right adjacent to the Whipple Avenue off-ramp sign. And then this is the existing view when traveling on northbound Highway 101. And then the location of the new billboard, you see it in the foreground a bit. And then the existing view from Industrial Road looking east and with the new billboard. The notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and public noticing for the project was mailed to property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the project sites. The notice was mailed on September 22 and published on September 24. Staff has received comments from the property owner at 171 Industrial Road expressing concern with the removal of that billboard, and also comments from several members of the public, some of which express concern with the safety associated with the new billboard. And you should have four additional public comments received after the publication of the staff report in front of you. The City Council will review the terms of the relocation agreement relating to the removal of the billboard at 171 Industrial Road, and that item is not before the Planning Commission this evening. Other commenters expressed concern with the safety of the billboard. Caltrans issues permits for billboards that are visible from the freeway, and they establish those safety standards. So the billboard's safety will be reviewed by Caltrans. That is also not an item under consideration by the Planning Commission. The commission's decision this evening is limited to the design review of the new billboard as well as the adequacy of the SEQA document. The applicant from Clear Channel is here this evening and can respond to questions that you may have. And this is the formal motions. Should you choose to approve the project, the first would be relating to the SEQA document and the adequacy of the mitigated negative declaration, and then the second is for the design review. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
I do. Lisa, you mentioned, and of course, the staff report mentions that the property owner at 171 Industrial was concerned about the removal of that sign, but I didn't notice his comments codified in writing as a part of the staff report, and I'm wondering if I missed it or if the property owner is here and can speak to that at some point.
I believe the property owner is here this evening and will speak to it.
Okay, because I'm just curious what the nature of his concerns were.
Yeah, I've had several communications with the property owner, mostly concerned with that billboard being removed from his property.
So you said that basically, design review is all we can -- all we're actually responsible for this evening. Does that mean we can't speak to what we think the safety concerns are, the fact that, you know, the billboard hovers over Whipple Avenue? I mean, we can't discuss any of that. We're only talking about the actual physical characteristics of the...
Physical design of the billboard, right. The safety items relating to the light wattage, how often the messages change, is definitely under the purview of Caltrans, as well as the proximity to other signs is also the purview of Caltrans. I don't know if there's anything the city attorney wants to add or change to that.
I would agree with staff. The only issue before the Planning Commission tonight is just purely design review. Removal of an existing billboard, that's an issue for council. Safety issues, safety concerns, that's an issue before the Caltrans.
Can I ask a SEQA question along the lines of the lighting? And forgive me, Lisa, if I should ask the SEQA consultant instead, but, for example, the section about migrating birds said that they wouldn't be impacted because the red and white color, I guess, of the billboards wouldn't be dominant. And my question is, if we don't know exactly what ads are going to go there, how do we possibly make that kind of -- that kind of statement? Or is there something, I guess, in the agreement with the advertisers that would say that they can't have predominantly red and white light?
Yeah, I'll have the SEQA consultant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we could do that right now if you'd like.
Oh.
Does anyone have any question -- any other questions for the staff member?
Good evening. My name is Julie Wright at David Powers &amp; Associates. We assisted the city with preparation of the SEQA document. The question was regarding the impact on migratory birds and the lighting. Yes, typically, I was reading in here what we wrote, that red and white lights are typically something that we assume when we work with the different Clear Channel or those companies, they typically put that in there, and it's something that's standard on all the billboards that we've worked on in our experience, that they can adjust it accordingly to avoid any impacts or glare for migratory birds and such.
So then Clear Channel would enter into advertising agreements specifying that in their advertising agreements?
Exactly.
Okay. And you've found from a SEQA perspective that that has worked?
Yes, yes, because typically, in the past, on other projects, they go through a review period to make -- or like, excuse me, they go through a period where it's like a test, where they have -- they bring out their technical devices, check the lighting, they have a device that checks it, make sure it meets the parameters of the actual -- what the output would be when it's actually functioning.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for this particular person?
So the initial study has it at 59 feet. Is that an error? I thought the application was for 55.
I think the earlier plans that were submitted that were evaluated in the SEQA document had a taller height, and then it was adjusted to comply with the city code regulations.
Any other SEQA-related questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one speaker slip on this item, I believe, from a Bill Garrett.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you, commissioners. I'm here tonight in two capacities. First, I'm a 30-year resident of this city, and having seen the depictions of the planned billboard, I don't think that's any way to clean up blight in the city. If we want to make this a neon flashing city with that kind of billboard, I object to it. I don't think that's right under any circumstances. Now, I also have safety concerns, and those are better expressed by some of the people who submitted opposition to this matter. I'll let the planning commissioners deal with that, but I do have those safety concerns as well, and I encourage you to read the report linked by my client, Michael Kenejad and Nijad LLC. They're the owners of 171 Industrial. So switching hats here, and in my capacity as counsel for Nijad LLC and Mr. Kenejad, who is here tonight, and I believe submitted a speaker slip, perhaps you haven't gotten it yet, but I definitely have concerns about this. As a revenue-producing matter for the city, I can certainly understand why the city might want to go this direction, but I can tell you that it really, really, the statutory scheme here just stinks to high heaven. Now, that's not a legal term of art, but it stinks because there's no requirement that I'm aware of in the city code, in the city scheme, that requires removal of a billboard at 171 Industrial in exchange for putting up a flashing billboard, a neon billboard like the one proposed. And I'm chagrined to have to say this, but it just stinks that the city would go and lease a small portion of private property from the owner on American Street where this billboard is slated to be built, and also generate income for the city by leasing that property from the owner and then leasing it at a higher rate to Clear Channel. And not only that, but requiring that Clear Channel, in exchange for this billboard, remove the billboard at 171 Industrial Road, my client's property. That's not right. This has been a source of income for the property owner for many, many years. The billboard and the structure are grandfathered in under the city's statutory scheme, and the problem is that the owner may lose that grandfathering, and certainly may lose the structure and the sign, and that source of income on which my client counted when he purchased the property. So for that reason, I think that it just stinks to high heaven, and it ought not be allowed by you commissioners.
So you're an attorney who represents the property owner who owns the property that the other billboard is on?
That's correct.
And do you know, I'm just trying to get a sense of who these people who submitted comments are, do you know who Mike Kenejad is?
That is the managing member of Nijad LLC, the property owner.
Okay.
He's here this evening as well.
And do you know who Tanya Poole is?
I do not.
Do you know who Paul Savavi is?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
Do you know who Jake Jones is?
No.
Cass Dokman?
Nope. I saw these as well for the first time tonight.
So you don't know who any of these people are?
No, I sure don't.
Do you know whether your client solicited these responses?
I do not.
One way or another?
I don't. Although, when you said Tanya, Tanya could be my client's office manager.
All right. I just, you know, there's no -- there's no way to evaluate from these, you know, whether they're connected to your client or whether they're San Carlos residents. They don't really say anything about who they are or why they're interested in this, and it would just be helpful to me as a planning commissioner to know who they are. But if you don't know, you don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So that is the only speaker slip that I have. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on this item? I have three speaker slips that say they're for 6B, which is the youth center. Is there anyone else who's here to speak on this item, 6A? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silberman?
Yes. So discussion amongst the commission. I note there was a comment made earlier about this sign being over Whipple. I just observed that it's about 10 blocks from Whipple. It's closer to Britain, but it's, you know, a good five or six blocks from Britain as well. But comments?
Well, and maybe this is a question best for the city attorney. If the -- where would the safety concerns that either the commissioners had or the residents had concerning electric billboards be addressed appropriately if not at the
Like staff have presented, safety concerns, safety issues are not before the Planning Commission. There may be a separate procedure where the building division would be able to address those concerns separately in a different process.
So then neighbors that have safety concerns should contact the building department?
They can to express their concerns or issues for safety.
I just, it feels odd not to talk about it, but if it's not appropriate for us, that's okay, but I would like people to know where they can go.
Certainly.
Okay. Building Department it is. Lisa or Al, can you put up the view of the billboard from Industrial right behind the Habitat store? I'm hoping this is more of a perspective thing, but it looks a bit jarring in that rendering, and I'm wondering if the...
Yeah, Trace, slide 11.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if the neighbors can see that from -- I understand that's Industrial, and the neighbors are a little bit over.
Right. There's no residences that would be able to view that. If you're driving down Industrial and you happen to look over, you'd see it, but it would be, it's identical to the view you would see of the billboard on Branston.
Okay.
So it's essentially the same billboard replicated at this location.
Okay. All right, thank you, Lisa. Okay, I think those are all my comments at this point.
Anybody else?
Clarification. So we're just voting on the design review? We can't consider safety?
Yes. Through the...
So there's seven findings on pages five and six of our report that are the focus of our design review, and those are the findings we need to make. I don't really see safety as being part of any of them. I mean, there is, the design of the proposal is appropriate to the city, the neighborhood, and the lot in which it's proposed, but that's not really safety. I mean, if there was, I mean, if there was concern about the form, materials, colors, setbacks, location, or height, but, I mean, it's, seems like it's a billboard and a billboard location.
And the nexus for the existing billboard that's pretty much identical to this one is already there, so.
I don't want to shut down discussion if there's more discussion to be had, but if staff wants to put the motion back up, and I think, is there any more discussion?
No, I mean, I'll make the comment that I think that from a safety concern that we are not discussing, and from a cumulative attractiveness of freeways that we are also not discussing, I think those are conversations that maybe can be had at the council level or elsewhere, because, you know, at some point, there is a critical mass of electric billboards that I think, I don't know that this one creates one, but I do think at some point, that's something to consider. Lady Bird Johnson would have a lot to say about that, but, so.
I would agree.
But I understand that that's not our place. But yeah, as far as this billboard, I have no comments on its design or anything that would negate the seven findings listed in the report.
All right. So anyone want to make a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution for approval of the mitigated negative declaration associated with proposed installation of a new LED billboard at 815 American Street and removal of a billboard at 171 Industrial Road, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the prepared initial study mitigated negative declaration and staff report.
Before anyone seconds that, did I close the, did I get a motion to close the public hearing? Okay, is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the first motion.
I'll second it.
All right. A resounding, I want the minister to reflect a resoundingly positive second from Angela. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman?
No.
Vice Chair Bradley?
No.
Chair Silberman?
Yes. There's another motion?
I guess I'm going to make that motion, too. I move that the Planning Commission approve the design review associated with the proposed installation of a new LED billboard at 815 American Street, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and as condition of the design review certificate.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman?
No.
Vice Chair Bradley?
No.
Chair Silberman?
Yes. All right. All right. Moving on to the youth center. We have an item for consideration of a general plan amendment to eliminate policy PR 3.7 to allow adult activities to be programmed in the youth center. Is there a staff presentation?
There is. Thank you, good evening. I'm Laura Russell. I'll be presenting this item this evening with Amy Newby, our city's Parks and Recreation Director. So again, the item before you is a general plan amendment to remove a policy related to the city's youth center. And you have a document that was distributed on the DIAIS, and that's the draft youth center use policy. It's also available to the public. We did receive some questions this afternoon in regards to this, so we hope that that clarifies. And Amy, we'll talk about that a little bit in a moment. The youth center, as you may know, is located at 1001 Chestnut Street, where Chestnut ends at Burton Park. The general plan and zoning classification is park, which allows active and passive public parks, community centers, and other recreational uses. In 1995, the City Council adopted a resolution approving a master plan for Burton Park and certifying the environmental document that went with that master plan. The master plan included the city's youth center. That resolution included a restriction that the new youth center be limited to uses related only for youth. And then that policy was included in the general plan in 2009 as PR 3.7, and that's the one in the red box here. Protect the youth center as a valuable venue exclusively for youth activities and programs. And then, as a side note, there's also physical renovations of the building that are being planned, but nothing about those physical renovations are with the Planning Commission's purview, but I wanted to mention it because they are included in the SEQA exemption. So now we'll turn it over to Amy to provide some more details.
Good evening, Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for having me this evening. So each year, City Council reviews and adopts an updated strategic plan while staff work on to develop work plans to meet the council's objectives. This year, one of the objectives included in the strategic plan is to maximize underused facilities and resources, which includes the youth center. As part of this work item, work plan item is the consideration to eliminate the general plan policy PR 3.7 to expand the opportunities in the community to use the youth center during non-youth hours. So current use of the facility, in a typical... So current use of the facility, in a typical day, you'll see some of these activities happening. Each day, we have our after-school drop-in program for youth, Monday through Friday, that's open from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., Wednesdays from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., and then all school holidays and vacation breaks, such as summer and winter breaks, we are open from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That's a free after-school program for youth ages 10 up to 18. We also have youth special events, some Friday evenings, which would include middle school dances or kids' night out events. In the mornings, we have parent and taught more special interest classes such as art, music. In the afternoons, we have some more older youth after-school classes, which would include cooking and art as well. And then we do have a weekend family gym time on Sundays, which is open for anyone in the community to bring their kids and just have an open gym time at the facility. So the proposed use, and I wanted to make sure that we're all clear on this this evening, as established in the youth center use policy, which was distributed tonight, which is adopted by city council, the youth use would be, would remain the priority of scheduled activities in the youth center. And as specified in the policy, under the priority allocations, there's four groups identified. The first priority is youth and family programs administered or co-sponsored by the city and the Parks and Recreation Department. The second priority is resident nonprofit youth organizations, which would include youth sport organizations like AYSO, Little League, or other local youth sport club teams and practice, for practices. The third priority then becomes the adult programs sponsored, administered or co-sponsored by the city and Parks and Recreation Department. And the fourth priority then becomes resident and non-resident private rentals. All future potential expansion of youth programs would also take priority over any adult programming. And any new adult programming would happen during non-youth times. Some of the examples of classes we could be including in the youth center for adults would be morning yoga and fitness classes, daytime drop-in basketball, pickleball, soccer, and evening classes, lectures or sport leagues. Some of the outreach that we've done this year include attending the youth advisory council meeting in January and attending the Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission in June, which the commission voted in favor, as did the youth advisory council. For the Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission meeting, we did notify property owners within 300 feet of the facility. And then we're here tonight at the planning commission.
So we just wanted to briefly touch on the CEQA determination. Planning staff worked with the city attorney's office and an outside CEQA consultant to analyze the project, and the conclusion of that analysis is that the project qualifies for a categorical exemption under three sections of the CEQA guidelines, and under case law, you can combine those different exemptions together to cover the different aspects of the project. So that's what this analysis here shows, and the memo with that analysis is included as an attachment to your staff report. So Amy covered the public outreach activities that have happened as part of this. Planning staff have not received any comments from the public in response to the notice that we sent in preparation for this public hearing. So a resolution is before you for your consideration. If you choose to adopt the resolution recommending approval of the general plan amendment, this is the motion you would make, and Amy and I are here and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
So I would not be inclined to approve this absent the, the conditions that are described in the staff report, but that I don't see in the draft policy. So the presentation and the staff report both indicate that adult use would be limited to the school day before a youth drop-in program begins and after 6:00 p.m. and when youth drop-in program has concluded, and that established youth-only program hours will be protected, and any desired expansion of youth activities would take precedence over adult activities. If I saw that in the policy, I would absolutely be in favor of approving this with a recommendation to the city council to approve that policy, but I don't see that in the policy, and I'm wondering whether, one, I'm missing it, or two, it was intentionally omitted and I am misguided.
I think that's a good question, probably best directed for Amy.
And could you clarify, you're speaking about the youth center use policy?
Yes, so what, so when I first saw this, I was like, really? We're going to open up the youth center to not youth? And then I was told that there was going to be a policy that was going to limit when it's used for non-youth, which is, I believe why we're presented this, but when I look at this, which is the policy that I believe the city council is being adopted, it does not include the limitations that were included in your presentation or in, or in this report. And I'm wondering was, am I missing that or was that intentional?
I mean, it has a priority allocation, but I see what you say. I don't, I don't feel it's as strongly codified in this policy as it, as it is in our staff reporting.
Yeah, I mean, I see to ensure priority access is aspirational, but doesn't provide any, any guidelines to staff that are, that are clear. So, I mean, would, would you be okay if the policy included what the, what the report indicates is going to be the intention, which is that the adult use be limited to school day before a youth drop-in program begins and after 6:00 p.m. when youth drop-in programs concluded?
Yes.
That established youth-only program will be protected and expansion of youth activities would take precedence over adult activities? If all of those were in the policy, would, would that be workable?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's it for me. Any other questions for staff?
No, hit the nail on the head.
That was in line with my question, too, was...
Okay. So I have three speaker slips. The first one is Vera B. Ludelberg? I mean, I'd say that was close, but it really, it, you know, I'm guessing, you know, the people from San Carlos who say like, things like that, it doesn't matter if I've been here for 14 years, you've been here for 40, right?
No, more.
See, you know, anything less than 25 is, you know, I'm a newcomer, I'm a carpetbagger, but that's fine. I, I can, I can accept that, that's fine.
Well, those of you who know me, I'm the founder of the youth center. When I walked into Jack in the Box one day, there were about 50 kids in there, and the first thing they all screamed at me was, please don't run us away, we're just talking, we're just hanging out. And I said, I'm not here to run you away, I'm here to get my chicken teriyaki bowl. And so I looked at the kids and they were not more than 12 years old, none of them. And I thought, this is terrible. I grew up here in San Carlos. I went to every school that's in existence in San Carlos, and I said, we need to have a youth center. Why don't we have a youth center? Don't we have a youth center? And, and all the kids said, no, we have no place to hang out anywhere. So I don't know whether it was God's move or whose move it was, but all of a sudden, I was building a youth center, all because we had a city manager who supported me, we had a planning commission that supported me. One of the planning commissioners yelled at the people that had, that were museums, and they thought we were going to destroy something wonderful in the park by putting a youth center there. They all, this one commissioner said, listen, you people, we had green toilets on the freeway at one time, it's time for everybody to move forward, and maybe this is a time to move forward. I just don't want to see the adults taking over the youth center. I think it's all up to us to keep it there. It was, for 10 years, it was my life. Everyone in San Carlos gave money to the youth center, I mean, everyone. And if you live in San Carlos and you didn't give money to the youth center, then I missed you.
There's a bill waiting for you with interest.
So waiting for me, but everyone gave money to the youth center to build the youth center, and the, the original policy was for the, the kids said, we're going to have a place of our own, it's going to be a place of our own. And when we built the youth center, every committee had a kid on it, and they decided what was going to be in the youth center. We sent out a survey to the kids, and they said, this is what we want, and this is what we did, everything, the colors of the youth center and everything. The kids actually went to the architect, I didn't go, and they picked out everything they wanted in the youth center and the colors they wanted it to be. So they have a real sense of ownership of it, and I don't want to see it destroyed. It belongs to the kids. I understand that you want to have adult basketball and raise money, and they said they were, the money was going to go towards the upkeep of the youth center, and, and I'm sympathetic to that, but I don't want it to make, be more important than what the kids are going to do. And the age of the kids at the youth center goes up, and I remember was up to 17, not 18, but it's a great facility. If you have your kids and they go there, you will see how much they love it. My goal was to have a place for kids so that they couldn't get into trouble, and I think that has happened. Have any of you visited the youth center when the kids are, are there? How important it is? Anyway, I gave my life to it. I'm still the president of the San Carlos Youth Center Foundation, and I recently found out from the UCLA professor that teaches people how to run foundations, which is what we do, and he told me, you can't fire me because I'm the founder. So I said, oh my God, where did you read that? And so, but that's, that was just a joke, but anyway, we still raise money, we give money to the youth center all the time. In fact, we just got a very large donation, and we want it to continue to be a youth center. And one thing you really should know, it is the best youth center in the whole state of California, and all of you had a lot, not, maybe not you, but your predecessors had something to do with making it happen. And we really thank you for...
May I ask a question? Oh, go ahead, Amy.
No, please.
If we were, so are you...
Oh, I didn't know who was talking.
Oh, forgive me. Do you have any specific, I guess protections you'd like us to add in?
Yeah, well, one of the things...
If they were going to utilize the building at night for adult activities?
Never, that adults should never come first. It has to be, if, if you have the men playing basketball on Tuesday night and there's a volleyball team of girls, let's say, for instance, or boys or whatever, that want to play volleyball on Tuesday night, then I think there should be some concession on the part of the, the basketball team. And also, it's going to make a big difference in how the gymnasium is utilized, and there's going to be more upkeep.
Additional waiting here, for sure.
Because of, because of that, that's something to consider. But I understand they want to, I try to think openly and move forward, I just don't want you to overstep the kids.
I think we're all in agreement on that.
Well, it could happen.
Right.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is Steve Divney.
Good evening, Steve Divney, 185 Vine Street, newcomer to San Carlos, at 22 and a half years. Thanks for your service. I've been there on a few different commissions, and I know at times it can be vexing, but also fun. I'd like the chair's take on the nexus between what the youth center policy is or was drafted, and thank you for getting that, that helps, helps a lot in getting closer to it. I'm in commercial real estate, I love unlocking value where we can. But my question is, in addition to echoing your comments, is instead of eliminating policy PR 3.7, did we think about changing it, editing it, to say something along these lines, and Al, you've seen me do this before, I always love editing, instead of exclusively, what if we said primarily, and then at the end, after programs with, inserted, with priorities delineated in the youth center use policy as adopted by a city council? Something like that, where the nexus is really tighter, and we don't eliminate this because I don't think it needs to be eliminated at all, because it should be primarily for the kids, that's what we're trying to accomplish. So I put that for your consideration, and thanks for taking this seriously.
Thank you. And the Honorable Don Eaton? I think, I think, I think honorarium stay with you forever, don't they? You don't ever lose them.
I don't know, I think I'm getting less honorable all the time, so it's okay. My name is Don Eaton, and I, I have been around a while. I think we've been in our house about 42 years, so. The reason I'm here is I'm a representative tonight, besides just representing me and my thoughts and a little history in this whole thing, and a little perspective in this whole thing, but I'm representing the Youth Center Foundation, as is Vera. And Vera has done a wonderful work for the, for the city. This was part of her life. She's, she's done a tremendous amount of good for the city, especially in this area, and deserves to be listened to in that respect from a perspective standpoint. I, I looked at part of the staff report, and it talks about the purpose of the original policy when the youth center was built, and it said, to provide a sense of belonging and a sense of community for the kids. So the answer is, what's changed? Well, nothing, obviously, other than the fact that the city council wants to prioritize the use of the public facilities, and you know what? I get that side of it, too, obviously. And so there's, there's a compromise in there. Steve probably suggested something very reasonable, let's see what comes out in the end on something like that. I think that there are certainly some issues, certainly extra maintenance, you know, that's going to happen, and I think borrowing from the policy we set up for the library of using the second story and the rentals we get there to maintain the library, well, same type of principle, use the extra income you'd get from adult basketball leagues or from whatever, exercise classes, use that, stick it in a separate fund and use that to maintain the youth center. The youth center is a pretty special place that way. For example, something else that might be wanted to be considered, the youth center has always had a no alcohol policy on purpose, even though kids aren't around when alcohol might be there, but it's, it's just kind of the principle of the thing. It is the youth center, how is that going to be dealt with? Maybe the language, depending on how carefully it's worded, some people might try to get around that, some, there's all sorts of feelings on that, nobody wants to abuse anything. On the other hand, there, there's some merit in, in what's happened and what has hap, what is happening, how our society is changing, I mean, it wouldn't be the first time that, and I'll, I'll give the specific example. I was the chair of the planning commission way back when the Highlands Park was being considered either for the new 49ers headquarters or for a lot of things, and it turned out so that the city ended up buying the land that is now Highlands Park, but they probably made a mistake. They didn't buy the pool and they didn't buy the gymnasium, they were afraid of biting off too much for the bigger picture. Now, that's an example of mistake, I'm not tossing darts at people because people make mistakes, but I think it's important to recognize that when you make decisions that have long-term impact, be wise, as wise as you can that way, and so I know you will. Thanks very much.
All right, any other comments from the public? So does staff or the city attorney have any thoughts on the suggestion that we, rather than eliminate the policy, add the word priority, which I know we can do, I mean, there's, there's no, I mean, there can't be any concern there, but, but as far as making reference to a policy, can we do that?
I mean, it would seem we can make a motion to revise the policy instead of remove it. Am I?
No, 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 I mean, what, what Steve was suggesting, so yeah, we can definitely revise the policy, and I'm using policy too many times, which is why I'm being confusing by accident, is we clearly can amend the policy... clearly can amend the policy, but whether we can refer to a separate policy within the policy as, whether we're permitted to do that, which, I mean, sounds like a good idea in the abstract, I just don't know whether it's okay for that sort of policy.
So I want to make sure that I'm clear with the question is.
Yeah.
So the action before the Planning Commission tonight is whether you approve an amendment to the general plan?
Yeah.
Which is almost like a prerequisite before this policy can be implemented. But is the question, can you make a recommendation?
Yes, so let me take it out of the abstract, which Steve already did, but I will steal his idea as my own and pretend like he didn't make it. If we turn to page 134 of our packet, there's policy PR 3.7, and the staff recommendation is to eliminate it. Steve's suggestion, which I am stealing, is that rather than eliminating it, this would say, protect the Youth Center as a valuable venue primarily for youth activities and programs consistent with a policy adopted by the City Council. And the part that I'm not sure about is the consistent with a policy adopted by the City Council, whether that belongs in a general plan policy.
We were just saying that there are some other policies that are referenced in the general plan, like the economic development plan is referenced, the zoning code is referenced. So I think if you were going to reference a specific document?
The Youth Center use policy.
That would be, yes, that would be adopted by the City Council by resolution, then that would seem appropriate.
Any other questions for staff before we close the public hearing?
And this might be fine after we close the public hearing, but now I'm curious how we do the motion, not only because we'd be revising the general, you know?
Yep.
General plan amendment, but also wanting to beef up additional specific protections in the youth ordinance, which isn't really what we're...
I can do it. I can do it, no problem. The only thing I'll need to check before we make the motion is whether there's anything else that folks want to add, other than the stuff I already referenced from the staff report.
No, I mean, when, not unless there's some overarching vision statement that I'm not reading as a part of the Youth Center governing documents. But what I was thinking, of course, would be that we'd include the additional specific protections outlined, paragraph 3, page 2.
Yeah, I just think that what we'll do is, we'll move to modify the policy as described with a recommendation that the City Council adopt a Youth Center use policy consistent with that presented to the Planning Commission with the additions, is what we will do.
I'm fine with that.
We close the public hearing?
Yeah, if you're ready, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So we close the public hearing again?
So there's a...
I'm sorry, can I get clear?
I got it. Yes, there's a motion to close the public hearing by the Honorable Shannon Bergman. And I believe that the second was by the Honorable Don Bradley. Yep, and now we can have a roll call.
Then I will call the roll. Commissioner Harper Pedersen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Yes.
Chair Silberman.
Yes. So is there, is there any more discussion before I try and muddle through a motion?
I'm in support of what you're trying to do, I think.
Okay.
Go for it.
All right. Just give me one second to organize myself. All right.
I say I humbly submit what I wrote, but I'm sure you're going to do better than that.
I don't know that I would, but I can't read and think at the same time like that. So I moved that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending City Council approval of a general plan amendment to modify policy PR 3.7 based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report as follows, that the new policy PR 3.7 read. That's helpful, but no, I was actually looking for something else. The 3.7, where was it? What page?
134.
Should we say giving priority to instead of primarily for?
Sure.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yep.
Thank you. Protect the Youth Center as a valuable venue primarily for? Youth activities and programs?
Oh, you don't have to, that was...
I think I said...
Subject to a Youth Center use policy as approved by the City Council. And further, that the Planning Commission recommends that the Youth Center use policy adopted by the City Council include all of the provisions contained in the draft policy presented to the Planning Commission tonight with the additional requirements. That adult use would be limited to the school day before the youth drop-in program begins, that it be limited to after 6:00 PM when youth, the youth drop-in program has concluded, that established youth-only program hours will be protected, and that any desired expansion of youth activities would take precedence over any and all adult activities. And further, that revenue generated from all programmed adult activities at the Youth Center would be held in an account dedicated for the maintenance and improvement of the Youth Center.
Can I say something? And you can take it or not, but can we, the sentence said primarily for, can we say giving priority to? I think that's stronger language.
I don't have any issues with that friendly amendment, so with that, I would...
I'll second that motion.
Accept a second. If I could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper Pedersen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Yes.
Chair Silberman.
Yes. Alrighty. Probably should have asked beforehand, but does staff understand the motion? Yep, all right. Okay, so moving on to reports, correspondence, and general information, is there any report on recent City Council actions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can provide a brief report. Most recently, you may have heard that the issue of gun sales, firearm sales, has come to the fore in San Carlos. To give you a little bit of background, a group called Turner's Outdoorsman came to San Carlos and was interested in leasing a property out in a shopping center where Getz Brothers Sporting Goods is. You may know that area, it used to be Golfsmith, I believe, in that area. And it's considered a retail use. So they're a hunting and fishing supply store, and they have a number of locations in Southern California, and they're moving up to the Bay Area. And so they approached city staff with a tenant improvement plan. So that means they just wanted to change the interior of the building to suit their needs. And city staff met with them, looked at the zoning, and the zoning is general commercial industrial zone, which would allow for retail uses as an outrightly permitted use. So the city doesn't have the ability to do a use permit for that type of use or anything else. So we were reviewing the application and talking to the sporting goods store, and the issue became a community concern. People heard that they wanted to come to town. And at the City Council's meeting earlier in October, a number of people got up and spoke at the City Council meeting and expressed concerns with another gun store coming to the city of San Carlos. As you may know, we have Inberton Smithers, which is located on El Camino, and then there's a private firearm salesman that takes appointment only. So we have two venues in the city of San Carlos, and people were real concerned about opening another firearm sales venue in the city of San Carlos. At that meeting, the City Council, after hearing the public comment on the issue, directed staff to prepare a moratorium urgency ordinance for firearm sales in the city of San Carlos. So at their next meeting, which is on the 13th, we will present this moratorium to the City Council for their consideration. The moratorium would allow for a 45-day freeze on any firearm sales. And then within that 45-day period, the council has the option of extending that for 10 and a half months and then for up to two years. And that would allow the city staff time to evaluate the issue and see what options the city has in terms of, you know, do we have the option of saying no to firearms in perpetuity or some other ordinance or direction? So that's where it stands at this point, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So it's a firearms period emergency ordinance, or is it permitting additional sale or additional instances of a business that's selling firearms? So there will be no, I mean, basically, Smithers will not be selling any firearms in the next, I mean...
For any new, any new firearm sales stores in San Carlos. Yeah, so Inberton Smithers and the existing private storefront would remain, they would be allowed to continue to operate, yeah.
Any other reports on recent City Council actions?
Yeah, so you had made a recommendation to the City Council with regard to cannabis regulations. Those were presented to the City Council, and they were adopted at their last City Council meeting. So good work by the Planning Commission, and we're moving forward with those. So second reading will be on November 27th, or rather, the 13th, and then fees for the applications will be on the 27th.
Nice. Any Planning Commission comments or reports?
You know, I do have one. For the four or five people still watching at home, I feel it's important to explain to the public that not all of our decisions are enthusiastic yes or no's. I feel, obviously, the need to explain it, given my hesitant second of Jesse's earlier motion. I think sometimes, as Commissioner, we all have our own ways of making decisions. But for me, sometimes you arrive just on one side of yes or no. They're not always 80, 90% fully confident, 100% yes or no. Sometimes you're 51% yes, and that's where you're falling, and that's why you vote that way. With this vote earlier, for example, I simply couldn't not make the findings. And this is just one example. But I just think it's important that people understand the way we make decisions and our thought processes behind them, because sometimes during our deliberations, that isn't always clear. So I just thought I'd make that note. Thank you.
Any other Planning Commission comments or reports? Nope. Okay. Any correspondence other than the item-specific correspondence we've already referred to today?
None this evening.
And any planning staff comments, reports, or updates on current projects?
So the next Planning Commission meeting is set for November the 20th, and there is a possibility where we could have a mixed-use project coming forth. Actually, let me take that back, it's residential, a townhouse development, ready to come forward for your review on that date, but we're still checking the final details of that. So it is yet to be determined, and there's no other project that would be ready to go. So if that project isn't ready, then we wouldn't have a meeting on November 20th. So I just wanted to let the Planning Commission be aware of that, but it could be ready, and we'll make sure to let you know as soon as we comb through those last-minute details. And no other updates this evening, unless you have any questions of me.
Has staff determined that we have a quorum for November the 20th?
I believe there may be. I have to check with our...
I know that there is, there is a Great American Holiday that week, and I didn't know. I'm here, and I can think of nowhere that I would rather be on November 20th, but I didn't know whether we actually had a quorum.
I think there are some concerns about having a quorum, I believe, in December, but I didn't hear anything about November 20th, so of course, if there is a quorum, and if we have a project, we'll have a meeting. But if there is...
I would urge anyone who is traveling for Thanksgiving to let staff know, so that if there isn't a quorum, they know.
I just found out today that I will be going back to Nevada, so I will be in Nevada, and certainly available in Nevada in my usual spot at Starbucks for the meeting, but not within city limits for quorum purposes.
And then there were four. All right, if there's nothing further, then the meeting is adjourned.